Okay, this meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59. I mean, sorry, five, four, nine, five, three subdivision E of the Ralph and Brown Act. Series Resolution Number 2022 dash zero six and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While the meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of the emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, and I'll call the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Vice Chair Steely.
Here.
Committee Member Don Carion. Committee Member Otero. Committee Member Trefa. Committee Member Vera. And if I may just ask, whenever you speak, please turn your mic on and speak into the mic.
Okay, today we have the following presentations. Overview of the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, City and Measure H Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget.
Okay, that's me. Good evening. Today I will go over a brief overview of the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. Measure H was passed by the voters in 2007 and was added to the Munich Code as Chapter 3.10. Reveners connect revenues collected under Measure H shall supplement rather than supplant existing expenditures for public safety, which is police and fire. This means that the Measure H funds cannot be used in place of general funds, but that they must be used in addition to. There is an expenditure plan attached to the ordinance that may be amended by the city council as long as funds are utilized for police and fire protection services. Section 3.1.160 of the Munich Code established the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. The purpose and the jurisdiction of the committee is to review expenditures of the revenue collected to determine whether the funds are being expended for the purposes specified. The section also states that the committee shall meet semiannually or as otherwise provided and Rosenberg's rules of order are followed. Any questions? Okay, so now I'll go over the city and the Measure H 2023 budget. Okay, so this is an overview of the general fund budget for 20 fiscal year 2223, which started July and will end in June. The beginning balance was $6.95 million with projected revenue and expenditures of 27.1 and with the projected ending fund balance of the 6.95. So we did have a balanced budget when we started this fiscal year. Big picture overview, we do have $1.1 million of the ARPA funds in the proposed budget for revenue recovery, and that did help to balance our budget. Revenues are projected slightly above 20, the 2122 year and expenditures are forecasted with an increase from the 2122 year due to an increase in the cost of goods, the negotiated salary increases, increase in retirement and health insurance costs and workers' comp and public liability insurance increases. The budget does include the first installment of the ARPA funds. The city did receive $11.6 million over two year, two installments and funds from the ARPA funds are are to be obligated by December 2024 and then expended, totally expended by December of 2026. In council, it has been determining the use, determining and approving the use of all of the ARPA funding. This is the Measure H. Measure H is used to to fund police and fire. It funds 10 police officers and it funds the equivalent of seven firefighters with the city Modesto contract costs that we have. One-time expenditures in the Measure H, speed trailers and body worn cameras for police services, fire apparatus equipment and the loan repayment for the fire apparatus equipment that we purchased a few years ago and other tools and equipment. There is a slight increase in the revenues for fiscal year 2223. This one's difficult to read, but the yellow column is the current fiscal budget or Measure H. We, let's see. The projected beginning balance was 2.4 million. We have expenditures of $6.6 million. We did have a healthy fund balance and so we are trying to use some of that because we shouldn't carry that with a healthy fund balance. This should be used for police and fire services for for the citizens. So that's going to leave us with an ending balance of about $1.2 million. We are using up some of some of the reserves that we have in Measure H. So this is a summary of the Measure H and General Fund. Our total General Fund expenditures, again, 27.1 million. General Fund personnel costs are about 56% or 15.1 million with Measure H included. Total expenditures come up to $33.8 million. Measure H funds public safety, which is police, fire code enforcement and animal control. And together, General Fund and Measure H may make up approximately 81% of the two budgets together. And I believe that's the end of the presentation. In your, in your binders, you do have the budgets for the police and fire for Measure H only. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Go ahead.
Um, I saw on the one, two sixty-two, I thought previously it was nine police officers. Are we increasing amount or did I just memorize it wrong?
It's been a year. Yeah, it's been, yeah, it was 10.
It has always been. Okay, because I didn't know, because are some of these expenses, because the speed trailer that was purchased are plans of the cameras at the parks.
Yeah, these, they, I believe they're separate purchases, the speed trailers and they were other LPR trailers that we were.
Because I see that on the page. That's why I was asking. I didn't know if they were separate purchases or we just itemizing it on both budgets.
No, they wouldn't be the same purchase. So I
It is the same purchase.
No, it's not. We purchased trailers with ARPA and then we purchased some trailer or a trailer perhaps with Measure H.
Okay, so no definite.
It shows, is the 1.1 million from the ARPA fund, is that the, is that to cover the reserve negative that's shows at the bottom of the projected here?
The, the 1.1 was used to balance the general fund.
Oh, balance, okay.
Yeah.
Because it shows on here, projected is a negative 1.1. Is that, is that correct?
1.13, that's the amount of reserves that we're using. That's not a negative balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then so on projected of the next, the following year shows that would be of 54,000 deposit into reserves then at that point?
Yes.
Not using, perfect, okay. And then I noticed that the projected, see, the projected expenditures were 6.6, but next year and following year are quite different and lower. I don't, are we going to project a higher amounts for the following years because I don't see prices decreasing? Just curious. That was my question.
Okay, yeah, so the, we had, we have, we have 10 officers that we had been using Measure H funds for. And since we had a healthy fund balance, we increased the number of officers since we have increased that number since Measure H has come into play. So we increased the number of officers that we are paying for with Measure H funds. We may, may or may not use that same number next year. So the salaries are, we have projected to go down for next year, but if we still have that healthy fund balance, we will continue to pay for those same officers.
Follow up on conversation. I believe when Collins was saying he needed to get to, was it 55 officers in order for us to get the street crimes, which is part of the original Measure H law, does that mean that we wouldn't be able to achieve that by reducing the salaries that are being expended on the budget in future?
No, we still would. General Fund would pick up the extra officers that we have included this fiscal year.
They did in the reserves this year with the General Counsel. Oh, no, she said, I'm not close enough. In five, two has difficulties. So I guess that was just my issue, just making sure we can maintain our police force so we can get that street crimes. Because I did see some of the costs of vandalism and stuff that was in the budget that's coming up. I just want to make sure we have the police officers in our attention.
Yeah, we won't lose any police officers. We'll still have the same amount and we'll be able to fund those.
All right, okay. Well, let's move on to citizens communications. While the committee welcomes and encourages participation at committee meetings by the public matters under the jurisdiction of the committee and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. Over California law prohibits the committee from taking action and on any matter, not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the committee. I don't see any in-person comments here. So any Zoom comments?
There's no one Zoom with their hands raised.
And then the city clerk, have we received any public comments through email?
No, we have not.
Well, then we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and move on to appointments. For appointments, we need to appoint a chair and vice chair to the Measure H committee. Is there any volunteers or discussions for that? A volunteer for, to continue, well, I'll volunteer as chair.
Make the same recommendation.
Okay. No?
I think you're doing a great job.
Okay.
I don't know what it is.
All right, um, nobody else? No? Okay, no, no comments. All right. So we need to move a motion to appoint myself, Josh Dealey and Rosalinda as vice chair, myself as chair and Rosalinda as vice chair. Anyone like to make a motion for that? Might have to.
I motion.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
A vote then. Take roll call, right?
All right, so Vice Chair Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Don Carion. Committee Member Otero.
Yes.
Committee Member Trefa.
Yes.
Committee Member Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, moving on to our consent calendar items. All matters listed, oh, I'm sorry, I need to make an announcement first for our consent counter items. The, there's a correction to item six. The correct year is 2023 and not 2022. So all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Is there anyone on the committee that would like consent item pooled for further discussion?
Is the approved, the budget that was attached to the agenda, is that on for approval or is that just for our information? Okay. I'm, I'm happy to, I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Well, I think we need to first do the public. There's no one in the public for comments, but we got to move off for comments, just the record, I believe. No one's in the public, nobody on Zoom, I suppose.
Right, there's no one on Zoom.
Okay, now we can.
Great, I'll motion to approve the calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a roll call for it.
Vice Chair Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Don Carion.
Yes.
Committee Member Otero.
Yes.
Committee Member Trefa.
Yes.
Committee Member Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, so next on the agenda is reports from, we'll have reports from Chief Collins and then following Chief Collins will be Chief Ernest. Just pronounce that correctly. Twice, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm going to apologize now. I'm going to try to step away from this mic and stop popping a lot. I'll try to project my voice so it doesn't pop very irritating. Some of the expenditures that you're going to see here for the 2223 budget is $5,000 for Cellhawk Technologies and that is the subscription. A brief overview of what Cellhawk is. Technology that helps us, cellphone technology. I'm not going to speak too much more on that, but it's a very useful tool that we use for investigations for very serious crimes. $11,000 will pay for a subscription license for Graykey. That is also Graykey. It's, it's software that cracks iPhones. So it gets beyond the encryption to allow it to get into the phone and suspects don't give us their password. Get a warrant, be able to do that. Software cracks the encryption allows us to get into the phone to get investigatively for that. We were able to purchase that in the last full year. The Measure H funds, $11,000 per year, we get 30 use for that software so we can crack 30 phones over the, it's our subscription rate. You make a larger subscription rate, costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we're kind of dabbling our feet in the water a little, see if it's beneficial for us to continue to spend that kind of money. But when it comes to homicide cases, that's, that's pitting compared to not being able to solve a case, hold somebody accountable for a hate crime like that. $42,000 will pay for Vigilant Motorola LPR's license plate re-technology. We are able to purchase three units and place them on our patrol cars. So what that means, those are patrol cars drive around, the technology re-license plates, those license plates goes into a big data system. And if there is hit for a particular car or we have information for a particular car or partial license plate, you can put that information into the system and get critical leads. We can get location of where they were. Sometimes depending on the time of day, we can actually see who's driving the car, who was in the car, those types of things. So it's critical, a database. With this subscription, it allows us to tap into other databases where other agencies are contributing data to this. So if one of our cars in Southern California and they go to an LPR, our license plate, our, our information will be in there. You can continue to have feeds all over the state of California. Motorola is, it's a pricey. You put anything with a Motorola name after it, it's going to be about two times more money than anything else. But it, we do get the bang for our buck because of the amount of data that we can get out of it. As long as our patrol cars are driving around, we're capturing data, we're sending data and be shared with any other law enforcement agency that has subscription to the under the public safety equipment, you're going to see $50,000 for Pharo traffic collision scanning software and that's exactly what it is. We go out to a traffic collision scene, we set up this technology, it scans the intersection and it does 3D drawing for us. Pays a lot of time, money for our officers to be able to get back and do follow-up investigations on, on major traffic accidents. Or you could actually take it to a homicide scene or a critical scene, scan room, it'll do a 3D picture of the room with measurements and we can actually show that reenactment in with animation in a court setting. Another expensive piece of technology, but saves a lot of time from doing the old tape measure, roll the tape. I got this light pole over here, you pull it and take it down there and we'll meet in the middle and then we'll go back and spend three or four hours during a factual diagram to present to court. You're going to see $10,000 for replacements of patrol rifles. You do have patrol rifles in every one of our cars. Some of these are at end of life, but we need to replace those and make sure that our officers have the equipment that they may need. When they need it, it functions correctly in a life or death situation. And lastly, we always budget $27,000 for vests. I can anticipate between now and end of this fiscal year, I'm going to look to hire about eight officers. Within those eight officers, our existing officers have vests, but they expire every five years, so we have to replace those vests. Now Letitia, that our finance director can step in on this, but we do apply for and we do get a grant every year that paid for 50% of vests that we purchase. So that allows us to spring that money along even further because we're kind of getting two for one. That completes my report. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Has that Graykey been, is that number 14, well, I know our homicide is a low.
Sorry.
I was wondering about the Graykey that iPhone, is 30 uses adequate enough for what you're needing it for? That's, I just want to make sure you have the expenses you need.
Well, so, so far, I think we've used it twice with success. And I, again, $11,000 is a lot of money compared to the high-end model that costs, I want to say $150,000 that has unlimited uses. I don't want to spend $150,000 if we only use it five times in one year. So we're, we're being selective on the amount of uses that we have because we only have 30 uses. And we'll make a determination at the end of the year, if 30 is fine, knock on wood, I'd hope we don't have 30 homicides that we have to use this piece of technology to crack phones or even five that we have six phones that we have to get into and there's, there's our 30. So it's too early to tell if 30 is going to be enough. My gut tells me it's going to be plenty if we're judicious with how we use the technology.
Regarding grants, aside from the ballistic vest grants, is the city participating in other cops grant that federal agency does award?
Yeah, we, we apply for the OTS grants. We have the, the STEP grant. We, there are several police grants that, that we apply for and that, that we are awarded.
Did we already get a plate reader or were we just talking about it last year? About the plate reader last year? I know we had talked about it last year.
We talked about getting antelocyte LPRs at intersections. That has morphed into a number of different things. In fact, before, I think you were asking about this in one of the council meetings, we had $50,000 earmarked for license plate readers at our intersections. We did not make that purchase for the antelocyte intersection. We use that money to buy the LPRs that you see on here from Vigilant. So we were able to get three license plate readers that we can put mobile as opposed to one intersection. Now, thought was, could use ARPA funds to really put a lot of LPRs at our intersections, at the major intersections coming into series and out of series and in the surrounding areas. Well, that is more a little bit and, and a lot of the cameras are going to be placed in parks to combat some of the vandalism and the graffiti that is happening in locations. There is an opportunity for us to intersection or LPRs at intersections with the second round of ARPA funding. We are in the process of putting that project together and what that finance is going to look like. So I really want LPRs at our intersections because Mitchell Road, Hatch Road are main thoroughfares through our town and a lot of people come from Modesto through our town to get to Turlock or get to Houston or wherever. So hopefully we can, we can get that project rolling as well, but the first part of that, we will have at least one LPR, one of the parks, the rest are going to be fixed or pan tilt and zoom cameras in our parks.
Excellent, because didn't we have 50,000 allocated last year for the LPRs?
We did, and we, we bought the LPRs. They're just not fixed at an intersection. They're on patrol cars now.
All right, ready for the fire report?
We are.
Right, so we, we just completed our first year of our contract with the city of Modesto and everything's gone very well. A few bumps here and there, but everything's gone very well. I was excited. So we got another four years on the contract. And as you can see, as Letitia pointed out, without Measure H funding, our public safety in series would be much less than what we'd have today. So today we have three fire stations and a training center. So if we didn't have Measure H funding, we probably have two fire station staffs. So very, very thankful for this funding. From the fire department's perspective, when, when I budget now with Letitia's, before I was the fire chief here in series, I would come and ask for staffing and people's. Well, we know what those costs are going to be with the contract with Modesto. So when I come in, think of it this way, as, as we're labor and city of series is still responsible for equipment, station, the maintenance on the station and we coordinate all that. So I'm asking for equipment when I come into budget process. So this year, we were able to get some of our items that we needed, some water rescue, equipment that we needed for our new boat that will it, it didn't make it this summer, so hopefully it'll be here anytime. We got some gym equipment, SCBA compressor, that's what fills up our, our, our SCBAs we take into fires that it was in desperate need of repair. That was about $80,000. And that's really what we look for is, is equipment. Our apparatus is only a few years old. So we did a complete fleet replacement. Our apparatus is good for the next approximately 10 to 15 years. So we're looking really good there. So it's really what we're looking for when we come to Measure H is we're just asking for the equipment that we need. It's going to wear out and we always try to predict years in advance when it's going to wear out. As far as services to series, I'm happy to report, and I think I reported this at our last meeting, that we have ALS services now at our downtown engines, though we have a paramedic on that engine. And through ARPA funding, we've been able to put ALS equipment at our other station. So if we have a paramedic working overtime at those states, you can work as a parent, he or she can work the paramedic that day and provide advanced level service. So that was a good use of ARPA funds. And if we didn't have ARPA funds, I'd probably come in, ask for Measure H. So a definitely increase in service. And through the contract, we've been able to increase one firefighter on duty per day. So that's been great. We also, at our training center, we are taking the city council on the 26th to build a training tower. It'll be a three-story tower built out of containers and it'll simulate commercial structure or apartment structure. So we have nothing like that right now, but we'll be able to conduct that training once that is built. And I offer up to any of you, if you ever like to come out to the training center and take a look. I know Committee Member Vera has taken me up on that and she got to go out there a few months ago so I could lay out what we're doing out there and you know, the future for the training to with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And if you ever have any questions on how we, we operate as Modesto Fire Department providing services in series, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions too.
Any questions? I haven't, I haven't before.
Couple things, because I know when we had met, you showed me the extractor. Did you, were you able to get those at all the locations?
Yes.
I think that was, and then you had requested scoop and I think that was approved at the, the ARPA funds, correct? And you got, I think you said
The SCBA, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
That, that one came out of the Measure H funds.
Oh, they did, okay, because I know we had talked about it. I think that was it. And then the, I saw the 20,000 allocated, it looked like for water rescue, is that for like river? I think that was it, and then I saw the twenty thousand allocated, it looked like for water rescue, is that for like river bluff area for the park?
Yeah, so our boat has been out of service for many years, so last year's budget, we got approved for a new boat. The problem is getting getting the boat has been the problem, and we're also trying to get other, we've been trying to get two pickups for. Over a year, so that still hasn't happened yet either, but the boat should be here anytime. But they've been saying that for last. With that, we needed to do equipment, PDA. Life vests, suits, all, everything that goes. So we will serve that area and anywhere else along the river.
Okay, I I know another issue, which we haven't really had water, the River Bluff Park technically open yet. I mean, we thought about maybe even putting life jackets out there to kind of minimize the amount of rescues that you guys will have to.
Have a life jacket program, we actually have. A lot of life jackets that we're we're giving out at all our water patients that are stations that are nearest the water locations, yeah, we've. We've been doing that also, we're giving out life jackets.
Well, they have something there like where they can check out like they do in Sacramento where there's like a wall to hang them and pull them off or?
Yeah, that's what we do, yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys, for your reports. I think we're at the end of our gen agenda here, so I go ahead and adjourn the meeting.